First floor.
That's one of those things that irritates me a little bit.
To challenge in situations because we're going to have to relax the standards. The rules still say you're supposed to have to cover on and they're letting it slide.
We're going to call this meeting the City Council of Muscatine, Iowa, March 17th, 2016. Fran, will you do the roll call, please?
President.
Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Nat Big.
Present.
Sosado.
Present.
Finem.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Spread.
Present.
All present, your honor. Thank you, Fran. Would you join me in the President's pledge of allegiance, please?
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Is there any communications from the citizens tonight? Is there anything that anyone would like to share that's not already on the agenda? If so, please let me know and come to the podium. Let's get started, then. We're going to move right on to the consent agenda, number five. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda which includes items 6A through B, items 8 through C, items 9A through D, items 12A through B, and tonight's bills totaling
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to number seven on the agenda, public hearing. This public hearing concerns the proposed Mulberry Avenue Improvement Project. Mulberry Avenue from Palms Drive to Hauser Street has been designated for reconstruction by the city. The estimated cost of the project is $2.37 million. Federal funds for this project total $1.2 million. The estimated cost for sanitary and storm sewer improvements is $350,000. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Second, your honor.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to 10 on the agenda. Resolution presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the replat of McClary's first addition, Phase One. A request has been filed for a combined preliminary final plat for a two-lot subdivision in Muscatine County but within two miles of the city of Muscatine. The proposed replat would enlarge both lots by adding land from an adjoining parcel to each one. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommends city council take action to approve the replat. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Thank you, Bob. Is there a second?
Second, your honor.
Scott? Any discussion?
When they replat, when they replat, is that just meaning that you're opening it up, giving more lot size? Is that just an increase?
I'll let Andrew discuss that.
A replat simply when you take an existing subdivision and redraw some of the, some of the property lines. In this case, they're enlarging lots, but there is other things that you could do with that.
So do we have to survey that ourselves?
No. The applicant surveys, we're merely approving it.
Okay. Good. Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Mike, how do you vote?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, 11 on the agenda. Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contact, contract, cost estimate, and setting the bid opening date for the Mulberry Avenue Improvement Project. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Scott?
Second, your honor.
Second, Phil. Is there any discussion?
Quick question. Does the $350,000 come from the sewer projects? Is it funded from the sewer project, I should say?
I, I can get this up here where I can get to it. I am not sure what the exact funding schedule is with all of that. I know the 1.2 is from the federal funds, and I know that $350,000 is coming from another source, but I can't tell you exactly which one that comes out of. That's not exactly the question I thought was going to happen. I think I just heard Nancy stand up, so I think, I'll talk till she gets here.
It is part of the total project.
It is part of the total. Don't take that 315 added to the 2.3.
No, I just realized. But I was wondering where that came from.
All right. She's here.
We are going to fund the sewer part from the sewer extension and improvement reserve. When we did the budget, our estimate at that time was $200,000 for it, but there's enough money in the reserve to pay for the additional cost. And the amount we fund will be based on the actual bids for the sewer part.
Okay. Jim, on the plans that you're, you're having for the estimates and the bid opening date, hypothetically, what are you looking for a forecast as far as time for this work to begin and then end?
This is an STP project, so it goes through the DOT letting process and all of that wonderful review. And those plans are in contracts, and it is locked into a May 17th bid letting. So when that, that's when it'll be let.
The bid letting would, would be May 17th, hypothetically. They would start working in June, July?
Yeah, we would anticipate, we're working, starting work first week in June, and, and really, the bids are due on May 17th. That's the bid.
But I guess what I'm trying to get, as an overview, as, in a real broad view, hypothetically, if we give this work, I want to know how long would that street be potentially closed? And would this work would be starting in July and ending in September? Or would it be ending, starting in July and ending in?
It'll, it'll be staged, first of all. So not all of it will be closed. So the first, the first part goes from Palms to just about through that big horizontal curve that's there. And then the second part goes from there down to Hauser. And I would envision the whole entire thing to take until October with maybe a little bit of follow-on work, like some seeding and stuff going on into the spring. But we aren't, the closure would probably be no more than half of that whole entire time. And that's the residential portion, where Phil lives on down to where that curve, that horizontal curve is. The other part, the first part that's in the staging, that goes from Palms down to that curve, we'll be able to close that, but we're going to put temporary driveways into where the care facility is. And with the detour that can go out Baton Rouge and around Diana Queen and come back out Steamboat, you know, everybody will be able to get in and out that way.
So it'll be done the same year?
It'll be done the same year, yeah. We anticipate all that will be done in a year with some closeout stuff that'll carry on till spring of the next year.
So are they, they're not going to have Hauser's, Mulberry intersection tore up in, when school starts, are they? Originally, they were going to do Palms, start it while school was in session, finished, go down and hit that corner.
Makes a good.
Make sure it's finished during the summer, and then...
It would make a great case to reverse that staging, I think.
I think, I would think so.
Well, I mean, you're just doing, you're just doing the bid letting, so we're not even, I mean, you still can, we can still change that, right?
Right, right.
I mean, that's still not even, this is just in a, I just want to know that it's not going to be.
We could get a note added into that.
Like Colorado and take a year or longer, or if this is going to be going over into more time, which is, it is, it is. I just want to understand.
Just the minimal building that I did with disruption, with trusses and materials delivered, and they always seemed to hit right at 3 o'clock or 3:30. Not pretty.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Anything else? Thank you.
Any other discussion? Alan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, on to C, 11C, presented for city council's consideration. Did I skip one? Yes, I did.
Skip B.
We're up back up on B.
Okay.
Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the contract and bond for the CDBG Downtown Revitalization Facade Project. The bid for this project was awarded to Woodruff Construction in the amount of $319,800 at the March 3rd city council meeting. At this time, it is necessary to approve the contract and bond for the project. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Your honor.
That was quick.
Mike?
Mm-hmm.
Tom? Is there any discussion? If not, Tom, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. Now on to C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing outdoor dining for boonies on the avenue located at 214 Iowa Avenue. This outdoor dining structure was placed at the same location during 2014 and 2015 as part of the city's pilot program. In July 2015, the pilot program was made permanent by the addition of Section 316 to the city code. As specified in the code, the easement agreement is only good for one year with on-street dining allowed from April 1st through October 15th. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Thank you, Alan. Is there a second?
Second.
Scott? Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. In years past, have we received any complaints about the, this, in the streets, so to speak?
I would say that the feedback we've heard is overwhelmingly positive. One, one, I wouldn't know if I could quite call it complaint, one suggestion that we've heard is looking at possibly moving that back away from the alley entrance on their, onto Iowa Avenue. And one of the things that, on the staff level, we're still looking at is the possibility of shifting that up a little bit, so.
Okay. And the April 1st and October 15th date, is that, when it, April 1st is the first that can go up, and then April 15th, it has to be cleared by that?
October, October.
October 15th, yes.
City code does permit where they could come in and ask the city administrator, you know, if we had a really warm fall, and ask for another week. And if, you know, city staff looks at it and there's no snow in the forecast, that could be authorized to go further, but those are the standard dates that have been set in city code, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Not that I have questions, but there's a couple of points that Greg asked me to bring up, is a, just as a point of interest. This was started out as a pilot program. You guys had, the city council had authorized its addiction to test it out, to see how it worked. And we've had pretty good results. The second thing is, one, as we, since it's no longer going to be a pilot program, our code, that we were wondering if you wanted, if it's the council's pleasure, if it's the mayor's pleasure, to put this on the consent agenda as they come up for application, applicants come up, like they do for beer and wine and this and that. So this is something to consider as well.
How many other businesses do we have besides boonies that utilizes this?
We've had one other in the pilot program before. The, there had been at least one or more other interested parties, but that does may grow over time. They see the success of one, someone else is going to try it too. So we could probably, that's why I was suggesting, actually Greg and I were talking about seeing if it might be a good place for it on the agenda as they come up. And it's not going to be that many of them.
Yeah.
I would see it as being fairly routine, since it's in, in the code.
Yeah.
Unless the code specifies that they need city council approval prior to, and it's asking for more specifics other than just being part of the consent agenda. I don't have a problem with being on the consent agenda.
Sort of like the other stuff that's on.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have a problem with that either.
If we want to pull it, we can pull it.
So, my only, my only question, I guess, is me thinking, just long-term, we talked about the pilot program. Are any of them going to be on the Second Street, where we're talking about changing the streets here soon? Or is this only on off-streets that you're talking about, like Iowa and other streets?
Well, in the past, we had one on Second Street, and we didn't miss one here.
That didn't create any issues with parking or anything, or with street congestion?
It takes up, it takes up some parking spots.
Well, the one in front of Salvatore's, it was not in the parking. Guadal, or Guadalajara was in the parking the first year, but they didn't do it last year, if I remember correctly.
Right. That's correct. Even though you did approve it last year, they ultimately decided not to place it. With the way we amended code, this on-street dining is only allowed in the area between Mulberry Pine, Mississippi Drive, and Fifth. And, you know, you're talking about, they're reviewed on a case-by-case basis, so whether or not it's appropriate based on the location and the needs for parking. You guys will go out and look at it and say, oh, this is probably something that'll work, or we're not going to have any issues. And the other thing, yeah, and the other thing I'd like to point out, we've done this as part of the pilot program and now it's part of city code, is that every business owner and pro, every business owner and as well as property owner on that block gets mailed notification prior to this meeting, letting know what's being proposed, and that this is the meeting that they could comment on, so.
Do you know how much money is lost in parking?
Not very much, probably.
Not much?
Yeah.
Is it minimal?
I don't think there's probably any way to really track that.
But they're usually full.
Well, Nancy should add there at the tip of your tongue.
I don't have a number, but those, those spots on Iowa are typically full. You know, when it's 50 cents an hour, and if that was, if it was full all day with that, it would add up. You know, the other areas, the Second Street, of course, when it was there, there was, that's free anyway, so there was nothing lost there. Salvatore's was sidewalks.
The only other thing I would, I would point out on that is when we adopted this into city code last time, we did include a provision where there, if city council so choose, so chose, we could charge a fee for this. At this point, that hasn't been put into place, but the structures in city code to allow a charge for this. I don't think we would want to do that.
I'm just thinking.
I would want to increase the business for the downtown, in my opinion.
I'm just thinking of the, the parking meter stuff seems to be an issue. I mean, we have people at the food pantry that are needy, that are having to pay parking, and, and it seems to be an issue to not give it to them. Just thinking.
So if it's free now, we could make a fee for it that equates to potential cost parking, some part of it.
Sure.
That's also an option.
It'd be in a pilot program and wanting to increase revenue for those type of restaurants. I don't know if I'd want to, yeah, in my opinion, I wouldn't want to see a fee on it.
Well, you're increasing the revenue for the restaurant, but you're also increasing the traffic downtown, which is kind of our goal.
Part of the, part of the purpose of the whole thing. I would like to see it pretty good this summer, if we could, with all the potential business and.
Sales tax.
Opportunities that are coming with, with RagBri and the Great River Days and all that good stuff, so.
I mean, it's the prerogative of council to raise the fees if you feel it, to equate for loss, but it's your call.
Is there a fee now at all?
No.
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 If you assumed that every spot was full for every available hour for that, those months in question, we're talking $281.
That's from a banker.
Per space.
Okay.
Dave, do you need something from us to move this into the consent agenda, or were you just bringing that up for later?
It was for your consideration, and certainly open to your adjustment if necessary, but I just wanted to pass on what Greg and I had talked about.
What, do you want a motion? Specific, or just, just consensus from council to put it in the consent agenda?
I think that's all I need.
I think that would be more appropriate.
I would like to, I would agree with that. I have a consensus for that, and I would go with that.
Put me down.
Okay.
I take it boonies is the only one to date that has asked.
For this year, so far.
For this year.
So far.
Yes.
Yeah, so far.
That's good, good.
So we have consensus, then, right?
Sounds like we have consensus to move it into the consent agenda.
Okay.
And now we'll do a roll call vote for this. Tom?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. On to D, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the assessment of unpaid abatement costs to private properties. Periodically, the city takes action to assess unpaid nuisance abatement costs to private properties. The fee being requested for assessment at this time totals $4,286.97. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Scott? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mike, how do you vote?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Thank you. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a professional services agreement for development of a landfill master plan and future development options. The Iowa Department of Natural Resources requires that future development plans be put in place for Phases Five and Six landfill cells. In fiscal year 1718, the Phase Five landfill cell will be construction, constructed. And plans need to begin now on the design work and planning for the future landfill cells to get approval from the Iowa Department of Natural Resources before bids can be solicited next year. Staff recommends approval of Option A from Barker Lamar in the amount of $130,000, $130,340. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Alan, is there a second?
Second, your honor.
Phil? Is there any discussion?
Quick question, I, before we go from E to F, those two, one doesn't depend on the other, does it?
No, but they are somewhat related.
Okay. But there's no horse in the cart type of a thing here.
Horse in cart, no. One, one is one that's requested by the state to be done, the other's our request to be done. The first being ours.
One, okay, but one does not depend on the other.
Yeah, he is, he is our request to, to submit through Barker Lamar, the, get the design and permit submitted, so that we're having, have it in place, so that we can go out for bids next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Dave, you're recommending the, the first option rather than the second, but yet in the, in the consultant's report, they've, it sounds like they're most recommending the second.
I'll speak to that.
And that's the first part of my question. The second part is somewhere in there I read where we could still go to the second at a later point.
Right, that's, that's.
Could you clarify that for me?
Sure. I'll, I'll mention that. Laura did a great job of her memo, she explained it pretty well, which is all on one page, which I think was really good. The, she's here to answer questions if we need to, but I think we've got, to answer your question and to be clear for everyone on understanding, is that we have a landfill committee, which is made up of several companies and such, that have, contribute to the landfill through the transfer station or direct. And as a result, our plan that we had, was approved by the committee, by the council, past council, last council, that we would move forward with design of, design and construction, permit and construction of cells five and six. The other proposal is, Option B, is to mitigate or remediate, but we, not until we're told to, but we can always spend that extra 70 on that. And with that gives us another whole life of the landfill that's mitigated. In other words, we can basically carve out, stop any additional rainstorm or stormwater from entering into the leachate system, but yet be a, be a, basically a liner for the, for an additional cell or two on top of that. And in this, that area that we're talking about will be Item F, that redrawing the site maps and stuff like that, has to go, goes back to pre-1989 grandfathering rules and lack of documentation.
Right.
But this, this case right here, we can always spend the extra 70 if we feel we want to remediate, or mitigate, or expand, and you can do all three at the same time. They did recommend it. It's not a bad idea. We're, we're recommending as staff and from the landfill committee, the plan was five and six, and also from the previous council to go forward with that. But I'm, I'm, I'm confident that if we decide to go forward with the extra 70, it's not a bad dollar amount.
No, I'm not with the numbers that are involved with this.
But I, I want to make sure you know that we're recommending the 130 at least. If we decide in this fall, for example, to, to go add that additional area, and it's 70,000, then we'll have to revisit this as a council, and probably the committee should be brought up today, too.
David, what will soil boring show?
That's the next one, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
We'll talk to them.
Don't steal that, I wanted to ask that.
I'm sure that somebody put a lot of garbage there.
I already had that underlined.
So can I address that in the next?
Yes, please.
Item?
Yep.
Are there any other questions? If not, all in favor? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Now we'll be on to F.
This is a resolution, is it? No. No, it's not, excuse me.
It's just a request.
Just a request.
Next, presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a professional services agreement for survey control, site map, and cover verification at the landfill. The landfill has not had its site map updated for many years. Updating the map will allow for new survey control points to be placed onsite and around the landfill facilities. Along with updating the site map, this proposal will allow for verification of a closed area that was considered closed by pre-1989 landfill rules. The Iowa Department of Natural Resources has requested soil borings from the older sections of the landfill closed during this time. Staff is recommending approval of a professional services agreement with Barker Lamar in the amount of $28,600. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
Is there any discussion?
David, what will the soil boring show?
Well, it delineates from where there is garbage and/or other contaminants to where it's natural soil again. I mean, that's one way to looking at it. I mean, that may not be the most scientific way to explain it, but it's the clearest way to explain it.
So it's the boundaries?
Laura, do you have anything?
What David explained is partially correct on this. This is a record-keeping item, because we do not actually have soil borings.
As I mentioned, she did a pretty good job on this memo explaining it, and it's clear. I like the way you wrote it. Page four on the, of the engineer's package part that's attached to that is a pretty good summary as well, all right? This is in alignment with the item E that we just talked about, because if we have to remap, it makes sense to know, not only we sell five and sixes, but if we do happen to go the extra mile on mitigation, we're set up really well with that. But Laura's correct, that the previous, the pre-years, pre-recra, there's poor record-keeping on what was there, and where the lines are. So this will give us that line, lineage, the boundaries of it and such. It also verifies where there's two feet of cover supposedly supposed to be, or if it's not there, as it mentioned as well. So anyway, that's my sense of it, and I think that's inappropriate for, it's sort of like when we remapped the airport and it's remapping the landfill, making sure that it's, and all the records are up to date and in compliance with state.
And they're telling us we have to do it.
This one they're asking us.
Asking us.
Well.
Sure they are. Like DNR asks everything.
Right, we're going to find out what Soprano's Cemetery is here, right?
Laura, David, have we done these tests before?
I'll let you go ahead and answer that.
In our records for this area, these very old sites, the very first sites that were put on the landfill, which date back from the mid-'70s to the pre, what we call 1989 rule closures of landfills, were tested by a previous engineer, which was a city engineer at this time. There was a letter sent to the DNR, which I have a copy of a letter, it does not have soil borings. DNR staff of today is requiring there are soil borings shown. I've gone through numerous files at my office and at Public Works, and we cannot find those soil borings at this time. DNR approved this in the past, but they are requiring us to show verification of the actual soil borings and proving there's a two-foot cover of dirt on these areas.
That have been city engineer Ray Childs at that point, or prior?
Somewhere along the way of numerous, you know, different ones. And there was a letter, and there was a closure plan approved by the department, and I actually argued that. We had our attorney argue it, and it came back that you need to verify this. So that's where we're at today. And we put this in with this project, so it would be handled at one time when they're out onsite doing the survey work. We are going to be working with Martin Whitaker on some of the survey work on a local level, so.
So we do do these tests currently, then?
Currently, we do a whole different mechanism. When we do closures, the past closures we've done, you still do soil borings, but we have to prove that we have a four-foot cover. Four-foot on the sections that were done from 19, I would say, after 1989, up to about 2007. Then the rules change. Now we're into a different rule state for the next time we do our landfills. We'll be looking at doing a plastic liner cap and cover on our next cells.
Is it reasonable to assume that since 1989, there's been wind and water erosion, and that there's not two feet out there?
We've done a lot of erosion control, and we've actually gone in and repaired some areas, at least during the last nine years that I've been here. We may run into a situation where we have a few areas we may add extra cover to, but all we need to do is go out and add the extra cover and reseed. So it's not going to be a major remediational plan.
So if they find something, and there's a foot and a half coverage in, I don't know, 5,000 square foot area, then they'll say, these are the recommendations?
Yeah.
This is what this group is going to tell us?
Yep.
And they're going to come back and say, yeah, we found these areas would need addressed, and then you'll come back and tell us what those things are going to be?
Yes, we can certainly do that. And what we'll do is probably work with our contract operator onsite just to fix that area.
Okay.
Because we're looking at some, if there is anything, it's going to be very minor, because those areas have been well-seeded and maintained. And like I said, there's been, you know, we have done some erosion control over in those areas, at least the past nine years, we have.
Okay, good, thank you.
Laura, when they change the rules, so to speak, do they grandfather in things, or do they?
That's a good answer, Tom, no. It depends on the perspective. If we were grandfathered in, some of the issues we've been dealing with, the groundwater remediation plan, would not be affected. But because they did not grandfather in the monitoring well systems, those have all moved to the new rules, which were not the only landfill in the state of Iowa having some of these issues that we're dealing with, you know, different testing, looking at remediational plans.
Kind of keeps you on your toes, then, doesn't it?
Well, it certainly does. When it's not you, Alan, asking questions, it's DNR.
Zing.
Anything else?
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Welcome.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Moving on to G., presented for city council's consideration is a request to authorize the issuance of a purchase order for refuse collection carts. Three bids were received for this purchase, with two of those bids not meeting the bid specifications. It is staff's recommendation, city council authorized the issuance of a purchase order to ReRig Pacific Company in the amount of $112,695. There is $115,000 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Bob?
Scott?
Is there any discussion?
You know, we've purchased a lot of these before. Did we buy them all from ReRig Pacific?
I think the last.
You found companies that had, have the specs changed, or?
I can only mention that we've purchased, maybe in my background, a million of these carts. And, my company did, anyway. And ReRig's probably the best in the country, Auto's another pretty good one, and I know that they bid, but they didn't bid the right specs. And I don't know where they were in the pricing, but I will tell you, just from my own experience, that ReRig is probably the best. And I think the last batch we purchased was ReRigs, and they look really good.
Okay, thank you.
You can't have them, when you grab them in this cold weather out here, if you grab them with the automated thing, you don't want them to crack.
No, no.
So that's where ReRig comes in.
It's a bad thing.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Moving on, presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve contracts allowing Musca Bus to continue as a transportation provider for Iowa Medicaid passengers. The state of Iowa has chosen to privatize Medicaid. In August 2015, there were four managed care organizations, selected as were, selected as were three transportation brokers. It is staff's recommendation contracts be approved between the brokers and the MCOs, allowing Musca Bus to continue to receive payment for Medicaid rides to our passengers. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Mike?
Sure.
Scott, seconds. Any discussion? Are there still four, or did it go down to three? It's down to three now.
So originally, there were four MCOs or managed care organizations, and now WellCare has been eliminated. So we're dealing with three MCOs and three brokers. Right, it's a bit of a puzzle.
Yes, it is.
It sounds like the new system is going to be more complicated than it has been in the past.
It is. It's way more cumbersome for us, and that was kind of the determination for why we were going to raise the rate. So it used to be that we were able to submit directly to IME, to Iowa Medicaid Enterprises, our requests for the number of rides that we had provided, and we did it on a monthly basis. Now, some of these managed care organizations, as well as the brokers, require weekly submission of rides. And so what I proposed, and Nancy and I spent some time chatting about this for, I don't know, a couple of months, but what we've proposed is for route rides, we will sell them a monthly route pass, and we will, we won't be as profitable on route rides. But what my hope is, that if we bump up the paratransit ride to $15 a ride, last year we did 14,120 paratransit rides. So even if we do half the number of paratransit rides that we did last year, we'll come out with $105,000 of revenue. Last year, we had 95,000 of revenue, and essentially, the route passes will be a wash for us. So it'll keep our revenue where it was, and hopefully even increases it a little bit to help cover some of the loss on the route rides. And the reason I opted not to tally route rides and have us submit route rides, there's really no clean way to do it. They're not used to having people that use the route multiple times, the brokers aren't used to it. They have one code. IME has one code for our rides, and it just wasn't a good, clean way to do it. So this was the solution that allowed us to keep our revenue stream coming in, still provide the rides for people that need them, and not make it so cumbersome for our administrative staff.
So the monthly pass you're talking about, is that something special or specific for the Medicaid riders, or is it just the general monthly pass?
Yep, it's the general monthly pass that any member of the general public can buy, and that's the purchase price that the general public pays. So that's why, you know, for instance, and it's unlimited rides. So the Medicaid person or the member of the general public can ride the bus 100 times for $32 a month. So that's why, that is not much of a revenue generator. But again, with the admin behind it, for us tallying those rides and submitting them to various MCOs and brokers, it just, the math just wasn't working out. So I also chatted with the other small urbans in the state, and this is kind of the option that those of them who do Medicaid rides like we do, kind of the same volume level, that's what they were doing, sell monthly passes, bump up your paratransit ride to cover your cost.
The individual person, do they call the city like in the past, or do they have to go through the broker?
That's what's interesting. It depends on the broker, and it depends on the managed care organization. So AmeriHealth Caritas allows the passenger to call us directly like they've always done and set up their ride. Ameri, what's the other one that's very close to it? AmeriGroup requires that they go through the broker to set up the ride. So it's going to be a learning curve for everybody, for us, for the passengers.
That really is a burden on the person that has to go through the broker, then.
It is, indeed it is.
For each ride, Kristy?
Sorry?
For an individual ride request?
For an individual ride request. Not on that route ride. You know, that route ride, all they have to do is hop on the bus with that pass. And that was another thing that came into it when we were making the decision, was we want to get paid. And so let's say the broker misses Tom's four rides that he made that week, his four route rides, and they miss them, and they're not on the portal. Well, if they're not on the portal, we can't bill for them. So I was guessing that perhaps it would become very tedious for us to recover those rides, and we'd spend a lot of time going back and forth via email saying, wait, Tom rode four times last week and you haven't paid us. So that was another reason to go to the $32 a month for the route pass, bump up the paratransit ride, and cover some of our cost. We'll see how it shakes.
Obviously, you did a lot of work into it, and that's very good. I applaud you on reaching out to the other communities to see how they are doing it, to not have us run through so many challenges.
Right.
And that helps.
It does help a lot.
So.
It does help a lot. And Iowa Public Transit Association, I mean, initially, we had Matt Brick review the first contract we got, you know, and it's this, that, and he did his recommendations, and that's what we've, of course, gone with, because he's the city attorney. But Iowa Public Transit got together association as a group, saying, these are the things we're not going to do, and came up with a list that we were all in agreement with. And some of the brokers then changed their contracts, and things were eliminated because of the force of the group, so.
Well, thank you, and I applaud you for that work on that.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Thank you, Kristy. Anything else? Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to I., presented for city council's consideration is a request from the water control plant to approve a biogas utilization study. Stanley Consultants has submitted a proposed supplemental agreement in the amount of $31,080. The study will include a watershed analysis that will identify waste producers seeking an alternative disposal of waste. There is $30,000 budgeted for this study. Several areas of scope have been reduced to bring the price of this study closer to the budget. There's been an error in the agenda, and so you'll notice we're off just a little bit. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, sir.
Thank you. In order to, Santos, I see you're struggling there. If you look at, if you go to I., where we started on I.,
Okay.
The first sentence, that's part of this, but then drop down to J.
Okay.
Where it starts at Stanley Consultants.
All right, all right, okay, all right, all right, all right. I'm confused, sure.
Who did the second?
Who had the second?
Who had the second?
I did.
Mike had the first.
I did.
Mike first.
Tom.
Tom. So Stanley Consultants has submitted a proposed supplemental agreement in the amount of $31,080. The study will include a watershed analysis that will identify waste producers seeking an alternative disposal of waste. There is $30,000 budgeted for the study already. Several areas of scope have been reduced to bring the price of this study closer to the budgeted amount. Is there a motion? We got that. Do we have any discussion?
I got a few questions.
All right, Santos.
So do I for John.
And thank you for helping us clear this up.
Well, that was my fault. We, I've been working furiously with the engineer to get numbers and everything together, and we just got this in today, so that's why it's kind of confusing.
All right.
Things got mixed up a little bit.
So initially, what did, what was just in a broad view, we don't really need to get a big detail, what were some of the areas? get a big detail, what did, what were some of the areas that you took off the scope? You reduced some of the things to bring the price closer to the budget.
Well, we looked at, um, alterations to the digesters. We looked at different processes for the digesters. We looked at all different kinds of things that sound as interesting, and, and hopefully will go forward in the future. And that's the, probably the biggest part of it. I mean, there's little ancillary things that we took off, but the biggest part was, uh, changing the digestion process from mesophilic to thermophilic. It's a higher temperature digester. Which actually breaks down the solids much more completely and produces more gas. But it's a pretty extensive change to the process that we're doing now, and the study would, would, would add an awful lot of cost to that. And we decided that it would probably be best to go ahead and start the process the way we already know how to run the plant, get that really humming well, before we, before we mess around with another process, um, that, that we're not, uh, used to running, so.
Okay, good. All right, one last question, and I'll let Mike take over. The study that they're gonna do, how long is it gonna take, and when will it start?
Study should be done in June sometime. It's really, really meant to coincide with the free grant study that we got through the ICCC, Iowa Clean Cities Coalition. That's going to, that's going to work with Muskebus and some other, some other departments to look at the vehicles that we have in town, to see what, uh, what it would cost to have them converted, or to buy CNG vehicles, and the cost of different alternative fuels, across the board, really, that we could look at. And so that study should be done in June. This study, we kinda coincided to have mixed that, and that was actually part of the study that we were going to pay for, and now the ICCC is actually pretty much gonna be able to do most of that for us for free. So we got to take that part out of the, of the contract as well.
Okay, good. Good. All right, thank you, that's all I have, and I know Mike.
John, if, I wanna make sure I understand this correctly. So they're gonna provide all the information, prices, fees, et cetera, et cetera, so we can actually figure out what the return on the investment is, at different levels of prices and et cetera.
Correct.
That's great. Thank you.
When is, when is it gonna start?
I know, we're, we're excited too.
I'm excited about seeing stuff like this. This is a good, a good deal for the city if we can move forward on that, so I, I applaud you again on all the work you've done for this too, cause I know it's a lot.
Yeah, the next one is kind of in conjunction with that, but we decided to go ahead with it, since we already had everything approved, and this study will just kinda back up what we're already gonna do on the J.
John, could you send this supplemental agreement to me by email? Electronic form?
Sure.
Thank you.
Should be on the website, you can pick that up.
It's on the website now?
Now. Okay, okay, fine, I looked yesterday, it wasn't on there, yeah. Please.
Hearing no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Don't go far, John. All right. Next, presented for city council's consideration is a request for the water pollution control plant to approve a design and engineering study for the high-strength waste-receiving station. A supplemental agreement with Stanley Consultants has been updated for the high-strength waste project to proceed with design, engineering, bidding, and construction services. The agreement was originally drafted in twenty fourteen and has been updated to reflect ongoing concept modifications. The cost of the agreement is two hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, and it is part of the engineering and design portion of the budgeted two-point-two million dollars. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So move, John.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Alan, was that you?
Uh-huh.
Is there any discussion?
Well, just to clarify, John, there's two dump stations, one for the concentrates and one for the, like, the septic system people who dump it out of their vacuum tanks and stuff?
Well, that, if you're gonna include that one, that would actually be four that we're gonna have. The, the septic haulers that do, take care of septic tanks and things, that will actually stay where it is. That's not gonna be changed. Well, there, there's gonna be a little change to the pavement there, that's about it. The other one will be a vac and jet, uh, station, so those, for these vac and jet trucks that we have can actually dump someplace, um, appropriate, as opposed to digging a hole and throwing it in. The other one will be for, uh, fog waste from, uh, restaurants and different places like that, that they can come in. That'll be, uh, uh, next to and in the same building that we have the food waste processing that we're gonna do, so.
Is that, do, do we go out and get it, or do they bring it to us?
The fog?
Yeah, the fog.
Fog is something that we just receive. Those are other, those are private companies that go out and do all that business themselves, so. So the more that we do, the more we're actually encouraging private industry as well to go do that. And we encourage, you know, we're encouraging restaurants to have that service performed by private industries, uh, within town, you know? I mean, brought here, so instead of somebody from out of town coming, picking it up and taking it somewhere else out of town. And, uh, we'll have a mechanism to, to entice them to do that, to make that more, um, um, to make it easier for them to, to, to process and to do that way, so, to encourage them to bring it here.
I would imagine our supply of fog will extend way beyond the city limits of Muscatine.
I hope so. I hope so, we're.
Oh, idea.
Well, we, we've, I was approached, you know, many years ago by somebody who wanted to bring five-thousand-gallon tankers in three or four times a week. I hope he hasn't gone away completely.
So, uh, the two-point-two, which will be basically two-point-five now, we haven't paid any of that?
No, the.
None of this has gone out on our budget?
Two-eighty-three is within the two-point-two, it's not in addition to.
As part of the design, okay. But none of that's gone out yet?
Nope.
This is, okay.
John, at one point, you were concerned that somebody else might beat us to punch on something with, I mean. Well, no, I mean, there's not really anybody close around here to do that. The closest who's really talking about doing something like this is Dubuque, um, but they're, they're not even as far along. They, they have the, they have their gas things further along, a little bit further. They, they just redid their, their whole plant. When they did the, redid their whole plant, they put this in to the process, which we could have done, but I wasn't working here in two thousand eight when, when this planning happened, so. But, yeah, and other than that, Des Moines is about the only other place you're gonna find doing, doing a, a large portion of what we're doing, so, at least for the time being, you know, we'll be Eastern Iowa's big, big hub for all this.
I noticed in part of your narrative that you were putting in facilities to screen out nuts and bolts and rocks. You, are you, those are problems now, or you expect them to develop?
We haven't really seen that come in, no. And, and part of the project is to build a big screen that's gonna take that out. So, you know, I, I, we haven't seen it in any of our processes at all.
It hasn't come in with the septic system people or anything like that?
Yeah, that kinda junk always comes in with the septic.
I notice.
But.
Cause I know the bottom septic tanks can get some.
Yeah.
Nuts and bolts and everything else in them, you know?
But we, but we put a screen in on that too, and actually, that's something that, that we installed, um, a few years ago, is I had them put a screen on that, and the septic haulers themselves have to clean that out, and, uh.
Okay, so that's, that part's been taken care of?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Thank you so much, John. If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Moving on to our last thing on the agenda, communication from council members. Bob, is there anything you'd like to discuss?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Santos?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alan?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Scott?
Nothing, thank you.
Phil?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Tom?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Mike?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Dave?
Just, uh, Happy Saint Patrick's Day. That is all.
You're wearing your green, right?
I'm got green. I had green on all day, and then I went home and changed.
And Fran, you had something you'd like to share?
Yes. Um, it's not work, I mean, it's kind of work-related. Every, we have what's called our employee recognition committee, and I can send the email out, and our purpose is to recognize city employees and the work they provide to the city. And, um, every year, we have a recognition breakfast, and this year, it is on April the first at Wesley United Methodist Church. It starts at six-thirty a.m., and we just wanted to extend the invitation to everyone, you know, from council, if you would like to come and attend, we would love to have you, and if you feel the need to help us out, that would be great too. But, um, it is coming up, and we just wanted to make sure that you were aware of it, and that you're more than welcome to come. It gives you an opportunity to, to mingle with, uh, all of the employees.
Is that a come-and-go event, or? Okay.
Yeah, because it starts at six-thirty, well, we have to be there at four-thirty, but it starts at six-thirty, and then, um, people just kinda come in and they leave. Some people stay for a long time. It's really amazing. I mean, everybody sits down and visits, and they have a, a really good breakfast. We have a really good turnout, it's pretty cool, so.
Okay, thank you.
Very nice. Thank you, Fran. I just had a couple things of citizen comments they asked to be shared. One was, uh, a request that the revolving loan fund not just be for blighted areas. And the last one was back on the parking topic. In the old post office is where our Veterans Affairs, uh, office is, and that's where our veterans go to meet with our veterans' person and go over different things and ways that they could be helped. And they've requested that we, um, set aside two parking places reserved for our veterans so that they can go in and have their appointments. And I told them I would bring that up.
Isn't that building owned by the county, and the parking lot owned by the county?
The parking lot, there's, the parking lot is just staff. It's bare, and it doesn't cover all the staff. So they're talking about the parking.
On the street.
The parking places, yes. And the last thing that I would like to bring up is that I'm going to be leaving for vacation tomorrow, and in my absence, uh, Bob Bynum is mayor pro tem. If you have anything that you need, please contact him, his contact information is on the website. And thank you, everyone. We're adjourned.